You guys have to put in Go Cougars?
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, look at you guys at the grill, wearing your snazzy T-shirts. Already up.
Ready?
I put it up for the A.
All right. All set? All right, good evening, everyone. Good evening, residents of Blitchfield, and welcome to the August 23, 2017 school board meeting. I'd like to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. So just that the public out there realizes that we have two members not in attendance tonight. John York, head of the business, along with Derek Barker, who's out of town on business. So it's just the three of us. Board members, anyway. So revisions to the agenda?
I do not have any.
Lacrosse is off here, I take it?
Yes, yes. Took it off.
For those, if you looked at the agenda prior to the last couple of days, lacrosse was on here to present, to become a funded program, and that meeting will be pushed off until either the 6th or the following meeting. And my screen just went blank. So we'll go into summary from non-public actions from July 26, 2017. Mr. Burke made a motion to approve the non-public minutes of June 14, 2017, Mrs. Harrison, second, the motion carried 400. Mr. Burke made a motion to accept the nomination of John Van De Carre as part-time tech ed teacher at CHS for salary of $29,540.50 for the 2017-2018 school year, Mrs. Harrison, second, motion carried 400. Mr. Burke made a motion to accept the nomination of Molly Jameson as special education teacher at LMS for a salary of $40,001 for the 2017-2018 school year, Mrs. Harrison, second, the motion carried 400. Mr. Burke made a motion to accept the nomination of David Tong as district chemistry teacher for a salary of $56,134 for the 2017-2018 school year, Mrs. Harris, second, the motion carried 400. Mr. Burke made a motion to accept the resignation of William Raymond, Mrs. Harrison, second, motion carried 400. Presentations, recognitions, I don't believe we have any this evening. So that'll bring us to correspondence.
I have a letter submitted to the Blitchfield School Board, Principal Tom Lecliter, from Laura Gandia regarding Kim Nolan, who is a language arts teacher at the middle school. I can read this.
Yeah.
Let's see, "Dear Principal Lecliter, with great pleasure, I'm writing this letter to you to offer my extreme gratitude and praise for one of your teachers, Mrs. Kimberly Nolan. I'm expressing this as a mother of two boys who both graduated from Blitchfield Middle School, as a former employee of the school, and as a taxpayer. As a mother, I hope that my children are instructed and challenged to achieve their full potential and are able to learn and thrive in a proper academic environment. Mrs. Nolan provided them with this environment and instructed and challenged them in a way that their full potential was reached and also challenged. As a substitute teacher where I served in her classroom for different lengths of time, I had the opportunity to witness her in action. Upon entering her classroom, her management style was apparent. The students knew what was expected of them and knew if those expectations were not met, there would be consequences. She had complete control over her classroom and students and exercised this control with patience and firmness, creating an environment ripe for learning. Her style of instruction was clear, concise, and easy to follow. She not only set but raised the bar for her students in attaining academic success. As a mother, former employee of the school, and taxpayer, I want to thank you and her and offer my many praises to you, her, the school district, and the town. Sincerely, Laura Gandia."
Very nice. Very nice. Any other correspondence?
No.
That'll bring us to superintendent comments.
I just have a few responses to the board about some questions the board had. There was a question about, has the district ever sold bricks with names on it previously? And the answer is yes, it has. That was in response to the request by the group that presented about building a new athletic, I don't know what you'd call it.
Press box.
Press box. Press box, that's a good thing. I was gonna call it tower. And, yeah, we have, to the best of my knowledge, and thanks to Michelle and Barbara, during the construction of Campbell High School, we sold bricks for the main walkway, and the money from that was used for both the art music program and the athletic program. And so that did set precedent for the district selling bricks. We also, during the opening of the building, sold seats in the auditorium, where then little plaques were placed on the back, and that money was used to help defray the cost of finishing the auditorium, because my understanding was we were a little short on funding to finish the auditorium. So given those two precedents that were set, I did inform the boosters club that they would go ahead with their proposal to sell bricks to raise money for the press box, and I did check, obviously, with board chair regarding that. And so they have our approval to go forward. I believe that was a directive of the board for me to check that and then to act on it.
Well, my concern was, I didn't know if they were still actively selling bricks or if they had the ability to still sell bricks for the front walkway.
Oh, well, that I do not have an answer for. I, to be honest with you, assumed that that was something that was no longer active. In the two years I've been here, I've not heard any talk about that, but I don't know for sure.
I know that they can sell bricks if they want to.
So they still can't sell them?
They can.
Okay.
Whether they will, I don't know, because they, I, from how, what I understand, they have to pull the existing brick off.
Right.
To replace them, so.
I've never seen anything about, you know,
Yeah.
any type of form to buy one, so I was just curious if it's just something they're not bothering with, because I noticed a bunch of blank ones still out there.
Right, right. So, I mean, I can certainly pursue it, but that's what we got from information.
That's fine.
There was also a question about our attendance of our high school students into colleges, and we did a spreadsheet which we shared with the board. And in looking over this, I don't think there's any trend of significance one way or the other. It would appear that our percentage of students going on to postgraduate education is in the low 80s on average, 81, 82 percent. Variability here is anywhere from as low as 77 percent in 2012 to as high as 86.61 percent in 2008. In terms of attended selective colleges, I asked Jody, Director of Guidance, to take the book they use that determines who these selective colleges are considered to be, and then calculate how many of our students attend selective colleges, and it's roughly a little bit less than 10 percent on average, sometimes a little bit more, sometimes a little bit less of our kids, so it varied from. And keep in mind that the graduating numbers declined, so this year we had 92, seven attended selective schools, and eight attended last year, we had 134 graduates. So as a percentage of the graduating class this year was actually somewhat higher. And again, the high for that was 14 percent in 2010, and the low for that was 5.83 percent in 2013, and I think that if you look at it, it's probably pretty static around a single number. One could say that we certainly aspire to have a higher percentage of our kids going on to selective colleges or getting accepted and having the opportunity to go on to selective colleges, but I don't believe it's really changed that much. I don't know if that's good or it's bad. And that was what we found out for data on that, Mr. Chair. Impact fees, you had also directed me to get a little bit more information on impact fees and potential for using impact fees on constructing new facilities for kindergarten, if we were to go to a full-day kindergarten program. And as best I could determine, I'm looking at legal opinions and talking with council, that the past opinions have been that impact fees can only be used to offset increased enrollment due to new construction and new students moving into the community, where the kindergarten population would probably not be new students to the community due to construction, but rather the existing students and us offering a new program. I do not believe that impact fees could be used for the kindergarten. There is a minor finding in the other direction that we could pursue, but the majority of the information I found was that it would be difficult for us to pursue impact fees because we can't demonstrate an increase in construction leading to an increase in student population within the schools. I didn't question, but I thought about the other phenomenon that seems to be occurring, which is a lot of homes which have been static on the market for six, seven, eight, nine years due to the decline in the real estate market and the difficulty of selling homes, that's changed. And I just did a meeting the other day, and people were talking about homes are selling in five, six, seven, eight days, but I'm not sure that would help us because that's existing structures. There's no impact fee paid on the trans, trans, you know, changing title from the old owner to the new owner on new, I mean, on existing structure. It's only new structures. So I don't think that would help us, except to note that our demographics may not be receding as rapidly or at all, and we have to really watch those numbers very closely. So, impact fees, there is, and also, there was a handout you were supplied with, which I thank Michelle for putting together, which gave you the existing amount of money, which is dedicated for each school, and most recently in 2017, that the impact fee for the elementary school was terminated, and the impact fee is now directed at either the middle school or the high school in case of changing enrollment populations. I don't know exactly what the logic to that was, but that has been changed so that the elementary school no longer has impact fees directed. I do know the logic. The logic was, there was a report that seemed to indicate that these homes that are being built or trans in the community which collect impact fees, the projection was that the student population would be probably more likely to be middle or high school students by the particular experts that did the projection. So they felt that the elementary school would not see this. However, we're, in real time, we are seeing some elementary school numbers, and next week, or the next meeting, all the principals will be here and give you all of that information, and you can pursue that as you wish.
What happened in the case of, say, full-day kindergarten? And I realized that they stopped the impact fees. Let's say we brought in portable, and we purchased a portable to go full-time, and our average student count is, say, 50. And as soon as we go full-time, we go up to 70. Could you then pursue impact fees, do you think?
Now, I am not a lawyer, and I, so my opinion is my opinion, it's not an expert opinion. But what I would say is that we would have to demonstrate that new housing is what has generated the increased population in our kindergarten, not new programming. And so I think that if we had new programming, we would not be able to get access to the impact fees, but that is just my opinion.
I'd be curious when we get a little closer, you know, what that answer really is.
I think what we would do is clearly, we do have letter from council regarding this. We'd have to just go back and make sure we updated it, took a little bit tighter look at it. I believe there is a provision that is kind of on the gray area in terms of using the impact fees, but predominantly, it's pretty clear that they can only be used to offset increased student population due to increased housing. That's my understanding. The board had also directed me to do some research on hires, new hires in the district, and for the 2017-18 school years, and I've supplied this document, there were a total of 33 positions to fill, of which approximately 15 were new hires. When we break down the positions, you know, the assistant principal was part-time to full-time, lunch monitors, we had a monitor at GMS, that was due to a resignation, paraprofessionals, we had two resignations at GMS. We had one sped teacher at GMS, which is reorganization of the academic assistant tutor to a full-time teacher. We had a grade one, which was internal movement, so, and we had two new positions, grade two and three. At LMS, we had a long-term sub position and a tutor position, which was internal movement. At LMS, we had a paraprofessionals, we had internal transfer for one and a resignation for one. We had a psychologist who resigned, and a sped teacher who resigned. We had a teacher who went from part-time to full-time in a reorganization in LMS. We had a grade five teacher who moved to GMS from LMS, and the music teacher, as we know, Phil Martin retired last year, and we reorganized the music department so that we did have a music teacher at LMS who was also working at the high school in the spring semester. But that was really just due to Phil's retirement. At the high school, we had two administrative assistants, both of whom retired. We had a resignation from a part-time guidance counselor. That could just as easily be a retirement because this person already had retired, so it could easily have just been another retirement, but it was actually recorded as a resignation. Our receptionist was transferred internally to the administrative assistance position, so that really was just an opportunity for growth. We had a part-time PE teacher who resigned to take a full-time position. We had a math teacher who retired, and we had a tech ed teacher who had, was a resignation, again, was a part-time tech ed teacher who resigned, and in many ways, that was as much a retirement as a resignation, although formerly it was a resignation. And then, as I said, we had Phil Martin, who retired, and then we took and added a new teacher, and then Caroline Lightes splitting time between the high school and the middle school, and then we had a science teacher reorganization. So, and then, let me continue. At the SAU, our food service director retired, and we replaced, we have replaced her. Our business administrator resigned, and our curriculum assessment and instruction director resigned. And the current open positions, long-term sub, an LMS paraprofessional, a CHS paraprofessional, is what we have currently as open. So although we had a number of positions, many of them, if not most of them, were due to either retirements or opportunities for advancement or growth on the part of the various positions. So that's a brief overview of that, and certainly, we can get into more detail of non-public if anybody has any specific questions. The bus routes were published. Cory and Michelle worked very hard at that. They met with First Student, and it was a very good meeting. It was candid with First Student. We explained, and Cory explained. I participated in the first part of that and then left. But First Student was aware that last year, from the district's position, was not a great year, that we were concerned about bus breakdowns, late buses with bus drivers not going to proper runs, in general, just overall communication and responsiveness to the district. And Cory and the transportation company felt that with Cory there, there was a new chapter, so to speak, a new page, and there was a very strong commitment on the part of First Student to work with us in a much more positive way this year. We are going to allow the bus routes to go forward for the first two weeks, and then we will revisit the bus routes, and if there are any issues or any kind of late runs or anything like that, we will address them at that point in time. And First Student will be coming in to meet the board, I believe, in the second meeting in September, that First Student will be coming in to do a presentation, and that would be a time when the board can really take a look at feedback from the community as to what's going on, and try to seek a solution at that point in time. I believe that this is the fourth year of a five-year contract with First Student, so certainly, as we go into this year, we'll be looking at performance of First Student and trying to determine how well they're performing, and then in the fifth year, we'll have a choice of going out and seeking alternative solutions to the busing situation, or if we are satisfied with First Student's performance, to stay with them. That would be obviously a board decision. So I think we'll wait and see, and certainly, I'm hopeful that this year will be a smoother year than last year.
Let's hope.
Amen. I think that that is what I wanted to bring to the board at this particular moment, and then comment on other things as we go down the road, with one exception. We had our opening day yesterday for our teachers, and I thought it was a great day. I thought we did it differently. We started right off in the cafeteria, and the board chair gave a brilliant opening speech, and really thankful for that. No, sincerely, the board chair did represent the board very well, as did the other two members here tonight, and I just want to thank very much the three members of the board who were at the opening day. It really is important to our professional staff to see that the board is there, and the board is supporting them, and is fully aware of what's going on. So Liz and Tina, thank you very much for being there, much appreciated. Lynn Lyons came in and was our keynote speaker after we celebrated all of the various teachers and their years of service in the district, from five to 30 years. We had three teachers who we served 30-year recognitions. It's a fabulous testimony to the district that we have so many professionals that stay with our district for a long time and just do a wonderful job for our children. So that was really one of the highlights to me of the beginning of the year, is the recognition of teachers. Lynn Lyons did a very good, very good presentation on student, and just anxiety in general, and we were all very impressed by Lynn's presentation. I've heard more chatter today about it, about some of the things that Lynn talked about, and some of the ways that she explained we can approach anxiety in children, actually in anybody, ourselves, adults, children. I know that in several of the meetings today, that her work yesterday was brought up and discussed and dialogued. We are also fortunate to find that we have already in our library a video from Lynn Lyons on some of the coping mechanisms for anxiety, and we're going to be reviewing that and seeing where and how we can implement that in the district throughout the year. And we're also looking at doing a year-long look at anxiety and building resilience in students so that they can better perform, and to be quite honest with you, it's not just students, it would be all of us that will benefit from looking at anxiety and resilience and seeing how that can be improved. And then, after that, we had a barbecue, and literally, the administrators got toasted, and the teachers got a chance to sit down and relax and enjoy, but the administrative team was cooking hamburgers and hot dogs, preparing all the food, serving the food, and it was a fabulous, oh, I'd say an hour or so, and everybody was in the high school cafeteria, and it was very loud, a lot of conversations, a lot of really, just fun going on. I want to say it was really a great opening of the school year from where I sit, and I thought that one of the better things. Lynn was excellent, but I thought the barbecue, and seeing everybody just talking and having an opportunity to just have some space to do what they want to do was really great. So we had a very good opening of the school year, and today was a day in which I believe the teachers, for the most part, had an opportunity to prepare for their students, to start getting ready for next week when our students come in. So we're excited about the year, there's a lot on the table, we know systemically there's a lot, and then we know, very importantly, there is the NEASC accreditation at Campbell that we have coming in this year, and we know that's a decennial process, and we look forward to that. We will be devoting some professional development time this year specifically for the high school to work on that, and Principal Bill and I have talked about it, and we pretty much got that straightened away. So that's a long way of saying we're off and running, and we're looking forward to the year.
Excellent. That'll bring us to community forum.
Nate Cooperelli, a president, social studies teacher, Campbell High School. I want to echo Superintendent O'Neill's comments on the start of school. Thank you to Superintendent O'Neill, and all three board members, and all the board members and administrators that were there yesterday. I thought it was a really great opening, and I know there was lots of chatter up here as well about Lynn Lyons and what she had to say. So it was, I think, a very powerful message and one that resonated with a lot of people, so, myself included. So I thought it was a great presentation, and sometimes you look at the agenda and see there's a two-hour speech coming up, and you cringe, but it was captivating and very engaging, two hours, very powerful speech. So thank you, I think, for a great opening to everyone. I did want to speak quickly on the agenda in terms of the superintendent search committee. We had some questions from teachers, just about in terms of process, about how the committee would be formed. I think, obviously, there would be teacher representation on there. Their question was more of how that decision might be made, and there were a few members that had recommendations for you to consider, and one was perhaps allowing the schools themselves to make a determination as to which teachers might serve on that search committee. I don't know how the search committee would be put together, or if there's certain, you know, obviously, there's a lot of demographics that you want on there, so I know when Superintendent O'Neill was considering, the principal search committee was trying to get a good cross-section of the school, and I would assume that that's, obviously, would be the approach there, but that was just something that some teachers and some members had brought to me, and so I just wanted to, you know, bring it forward to you and for you to chew on, so I just wanted to take an opportunity to say that, so.
The board hasn't made a determination exactly how the process will work.
Sure.
But I know we've had some conversations, I've had conversations actually with Superintendent O'Neill.
Sure.
He says, like, one of the ways they've done it in the past is, any teacher that was interested, they would just put it in a bag and pull out two names.
Right. Exactly.
My suggestion was that we make certain, I think we need representation from all three schools.
Absolutely.
So at least one or two from each school.
Sure. Yep.
But exactly how those would be selected, I'm not certain how they will be.
Yep.
And the same thing with, as far as the rest of the community, looking for input.
Absolutely.
I mean, similar to what they've done in the past.
Sure.
I think you were here the last time when there was a search.
Yes.
So you do want a good cross
Absolutely.
from the community.
Right.
And basically, what's gonna happen is then they'll weed down the applicants, and then from there, it'll be the board that'll make the decision.
Absolutely. And that's, you know, standard operating procedure. There's just some questions in terms of process, and then I, you know, they wanted me to bring that forward, so I just figured it's a good opportunity.
I appreciate it. And what I'll say is, like, we're gonna get a little closer
Absolutely.
in the next few months, but if there are any suggestions that either you have or other teachers, please either submit it to myself or to Superintendent O'Neill, and we'll take everything into consideration once we formulate how we'll go about doing it.
Definitely, so I can go ahead and try to solicit some more information and certainly bring it forward, so, thank you so much.
Once we get closer to the selection process, we will.
Absolutely.
And actually, that comment is, that bullet there, the superintendent search, was more for public input if they had anything as far as
Right.
Well, that's fine.
Right.
Obviously, there's no one here, but if anyone else in the public that's listening, I mean, if there's something, really what we're looking for is like a little input, like, what are you looking for in a superintendent?
Right.
What direction do you want that superintendent to go in, that type of thing?
Exactly.
And I think when we get closer, we'll have more and more voices
Yeah.
coming to us as far as telling us what they want.
Sure, absolutely, so I wouldn't want to
I've actually had a few community members come up to me in the next past few weeks asking how to be on the committee, if there was a committee formed, so.
There will be, and once we get closer to formally leaving that committee, it'll be advertised as far as anyone who has an interest to submit that to the SAU or to whoever.
One last thing I do, we do have a few changes in leadership on the LEA, so I want to introduce, some of you may know him, Vice President of the LEA, Ryan Keller, he's a special education teacher here at the high school. Deb Langton and Julie Cohen are returning as secretary and treasurer and secretary, respectively. Andrea Angie and Patrick Keefe are building representatives here at the high school. Kathy Sidlow and Lisa Durant at LMS, and we have Lisa Webster and the wonderful Barb LaBelle as a building representative down at GMS, so, just wanted to introduce them, and thanks, thank you, Ryan, for coming on this wonderful August evening. So, thank you.
Thank you. No other community forum, we'll go to school board comments. Liz, any? I also would like to just say that I thought yesterday, again, I was only here for the morning, I wasn't here for the two hours of wonderful time, but I'll say the same thing that I said last year, too, that it's amazing, it is a testament to the community and the schools, the longevity that we have in these buildings. I was thrown back the last several years, it's last several years. It's like you just keep seeing people come up, you know, five years, ten years, fifteen years, twenty, twenty-five, thirty.
That was my favorite part. I loved it.
Yeah.
Maybe the T-shirts were my favorite part, but.
But then, but also the principals giving a little bit of bio in their background, which is really nice. And you start to learn a little bit more about these teachers. But it's fascinating that we have this many teachers that are here for thirty-plus years. So like I said, I think it speaks volumes as far as the district itself and where we are and where we're going and where we'll continue to go.
Excellent. That will bring us to approval of minutes from public minutes of July 26, Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make the motion to approve the draft minutes from July 26.
Is there a second? Can Liz second vote?
She was here.
I realize that.
She sworn in, right?
She's sworn in now.
But she wasn't there, that's why I'm asking.
I would say no.
I would say no.
Then I don't second.
I'll second it, the motion. All those in favor of accepting the minutes, say aye, aye, opposed, abstained.
Aye.
To zero one. I just think that's a safe course.
Yeah, I think so. That'll bring us to budget transfers. I'll make a motion to accept the budget transfers.
Second.
I don't know what the date was. Are there any questions on the budget transfers? Hearing none. All those in favor of accepting the budget transfers signify by saying aye, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Three zero zero. Is he going to be with us at our next meeting?
Yes, I told, what's the name of the BA? I told Cory that we would, he could take the night off and spend some time because that's the last night off he's getting until probably about April 15. So he did, you know, he posted the bus routes, like I say. And we have had meetings and we are going to be having the bus company in to talk after the first two weeks. And they'll be doing a presentation to you folks. And certainly at that point in time, we can get any other questions done. And certainly I think that was a major piece. So he'll be with us next week. A DOE 25, I believe, is that what you have in your hand?
Yep.
And we just need a DOE 25, which is a pretty standard procedure that we do every year.
There's two things in there, DOE 25 and the cover sheet of the MS 25. You have to sign them both. We're indicating. And just to mention, we need three signatures on the manifest.
Yeah, Liz will have to sign them. So there's just two things to sign here, right?
Spend a lot of money.
What's that?
That Liz gets to spend a bunch of money the first day. Need a pen, Liz, go.
While we're doing that, we'll roll into new business. And I actually have one thing I'd like to add in here before we go into this. I know we had a discussion as far as implementation of the one-to-one here in the high school. And we've gone ahead and purchased all the Chromebooks, but we never really like had a vote as far as to implement it. So I'd like to make a motion to implement the one-to-one program in the high school throughout the high school.
I'll make a motion to implement the, did you make the motion?
Mm-hmm.
I'll second.
Thank you. All those in favor of implementing one-to-one in the high school signify by saying aye, aye.
Aye.
Vote carries three zero zero. Concerned of the fact that the school's going to be starting in a couple of days, it might as well make it official.
We have stacks of Chromebooks.
Yeah, we got the Chromebooks. As a board, we just, Michelle brought to my attention, we never really kind of like voted on it. And I know the board, even the members that aren't here, are in full support of the one-to-one program, which I think is outstanding that we're going ahead with it. All right. So that brings us to, you have two new job descriptions?
We have two new job descriptions, which we generated, the reading specialist and the reading/writing teacher. And we generated those a while back. And we did, we shared them with the Teach Association. And what we'd like you to do is just to review these and give us your approval of the new job descriptions as they are written here, if that's okay with the three board members who are present this evening.
These are positions that are currently filled?
These are positions that are currently filled. The answer is yes.
If we have a question, do we ask it now?
You may.
Please.
So the education and experience is just a bachelor's degree, not a reading specialist or any type of, I mean, a bachelor's degree in regular education, special education, reading specialist?
I think the intent there was to keep that somewhat generalized. We certainly can go back and I can ask that question. I was not actually the one who crafted this. But I think the intent here was to keep it generalized and allow us to have the widest possible pool of applicants. And we did it. We certainly can revisit that if the board would like us to.
Yeah, if we can, can we hold that off?
We can, we can look at that again if you'd like, surely.
It says highly qualified status, so that would be highly qualified in reading instruction? Who wrote this?
I believe these were written by Holly and I'm not sure who else actually wrote it.
I was just curious. Because I believe the reading specialist at the high school is a general, is a special ed teacher.
Yeah, that's right. Well, why don't you ask the questions and I will come back in two weeks with the answers for you.
Okay.
So why a bachelor's degree and not a specific master's degree or area? And.
Because they have lots of specialties in reading instructions and.
Yeah. We'll get those answers and bring them back to you. And then we can perhaps go forward at our next meeting. Any other questions about these?
Well, you said this position is already filled anyway, correct?
Yep.
Is there one at every school?
I think there's a reading specialist. I'm not aware of a reading/writing teacher job at GMS.
I'm sure that Devin had worked to.
Can I jump in?
Sure.
I think for the, most of the reading specialist positions, I believe we don't have reading specialists hired. I think there's reading teachers that are hired to fill the reading specialist positions who aren't carrying out those duties. And that's some of the diagnostic work is sort of, for lack of a better word, outsourced towards a special ed or psychologist or that sort of stuff. Because I believe there's a distinction between a reading teacher and a reading specialist.
Right. So different certification. So we don't want to hold off on this until.
Can we, let's hold off if you want, Mr. Chair, and bring back those answers.
So the next one is the reading/writing. Is that correct?
Yeah. Yes. And I suspect you'll have similar questions here in looking at the description.
Yes.
So maybe, right. So maybe we can bring these back when the principals are here and they can probably help us out with that.
And Devin, of course, I think would add a lot of value to this too.
Will she be there?
I can make sure she's here.
All right. At least for this, and maybe we can, put at the beginning so she can be here.
Can do that.
All right. Be here with me because I just signed off.
Thank you.
Be right with you, I just signed off. Yes, I'll be right with you, I just signed, Favorable windows, spouse, where one of these days to be easier.
It's easier than the last one.
It is. Except you sent it like a month ago and I wasn't looking forward to, where is it? All right, I'm sorry. So next, on policies, we have amendments. So we're starting with BDB board officers.
I could give an overview. I think we've talked to you that Michelle, in conversation with the New Hampshire School Board Association, found out that there were a number of policies that we had not been forwarded from them. And Michelle's take, she might want to talk with more about this when I'm done. She's reviewed all of the policies and decided that there are different categories of policies. Some of them just need very minor changes, amendments versus those that need some significant thought and reapproval or some which are new to us because we don't have them. So this evening, we just packaged ten of these policies together. Four of them, we're looking for you to more or less go through relatively quickly. And the remainder, we're looking for the normal two or three readings in order to get to a solution. So is that fair, Michelle?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So the first one, if you, you'll note, we italicized, we, I use that word very liberally. Michelle italicized the changes in them. And the major change here is that the, the board, the essence of the change is that the board chair would remain in charge of the meeting for reorganization for the next board. Whereas prior to 2017, the superintendent would be the one to open and get the first meeting going for the reorganization and turn it over to the board. So the law changed. So this just reflects the change in the RSA.
So the current board chair would reside over the first meeting.
That's correct.
Selecting you.
And then if the, if the school board chose to keep the chair, that would be the way it would go. If the school board chose to.
Just around, you would.
Look for a different chair.
The superintendent just wouldn't open the meeting.
I would not open the meeting nor would I call for nominations.
Okay.
I, my own personal opinion is, I think this is a little bit more favorable to the existing board, to the sitting officers, than having the opportunity to go through the superintendent. But this is what the RSA calls for now. So this is a way that you have to go. That's just my own opinion. I have no power grab here, folks.
So I'll make a motion to appro, approve policy BDB about board officers.
I'll second. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye, aye, opposed, abstained. Three zero zero.
We used to do multiple readings and everything.
We used to, on amendments and small revisions, you don't have to do that?
Okay.
That's why I said it that way.
Because superintendent's saying the other ones. I mean, if you want to bring it back again, we can. But I mean, again, I think you're going to find all these are pretty just basic. The next one is EEA video surveillance and district property.
And again, these are italicized. The essential change here is that the superintendent would have to determine whether or not any videos could be used or be changed. And so, I mean, the major change here is that the superintendent would have to be waving off or signing off on any kind of utilization or changes in the current video program that's going on in a district.
And how is it right now?
I don't know.
Now, it's the, right now, it's the superintendent, the IT director, BA, building principal.
Is it or a hall?
Or.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Okay.
So they're trying to just focus it so that there's a change made that it would go through your CEO, so to speak.
Mm-hmm.
So the IT director, as of right now, could release the video?
He can retrieve the video.
Oh, retrieve. So I know only the superintendent with this, only the superintendent can?
Can make a decision to release the video through thorough review on an as-needed basis. So if the police wanted the video or something like that.
Right.
These come up a lot of times. We used to have video in buses and oftentimes they'd come up on nonsense going on on buses, wanted to take a look at the video. And so she would have to take a look at that and see the, what the benefit was and then make a determination and then determine if the video had to be redacted so that there was no other identifiables in the video, things like that. And then it gets more test issue, go up the food chain to the.
Right. So we're just minimizing access to who can.
That's what it's doing. Just focusing the decision at a single point. And then on the back page, it also talks about Litchfield School Board, its use of audiovisual photographic recording in classrooms for educational purposes such as recording. This is just a follow-up to the change in the RSA. If you recall, there was an RSA that was passed which severely limited that.
Yep.
And this is just now a follow-up to that. We had that discussion, but we never really put it into writing. This allows, what the RSA allows currently regarding use of audiovisual photographic recordings in classrooms for educational purposes, et cetera, et cetera.
This one came up last year, I believe.
It did.
Yep.
Yeah, and the board held a public hearing.
Yep.
Yep. And I believe that's.
And approved it.
I'll make a motion to accept policy code EEA-A as written. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by stating aye, aye, opposed, abstained. Three zero zero. And we'll go into IHBA, Programs for Students with Disabilities.
This policy is altered in order to reflect the new federal regulations, which now change, if you look in the middle, we struck, establish and implement a system to provide and ensure. So the new federal regulations are much stronger. You can't just establish and implement, you have to provide and ensure. And that is a basic change in it. It's a lot stronger regulation in terms of what you have to be responsible for. So provide, ensure, procedural safeguards are established and implemented. And so that provide and ensure are the major changes in the wording here.
And the procedural safeguards will be.
Yeah, thank you.
The procedures for the, for the policy. And those are provided by the state.
Right. Thank you.
I move to approve policy IHBA, the amendment to policy IHBA, Programs for Students with Disabilities.
Second. In further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by stating aye, aye. Motion's three zero zero. The last one in this is IKF High School Graduation Requirements.
Our current policy is not consistent with our current requirements for high school graduation. And what this policy does is to align our actual policy with the actual requirements. Michelle met with principal of the high school and Bill and Michelle talked through this. And they came up with this policy, which does align the current practices at the high school with the policy of the board. And you can see that there are not that many changes in this policy overall. So certainly if you want to have a wider conversation about high school graduation requirements, the superintendent would welcome that. But at this point in time, or if you wanted to wait until Bill Lonigan, Principal Lonigan was here in September, you certainly could postpone the vote on this. Until then, the wider conversation I sometimes think that we should have is regarding, shouldn't there be consideration for other than a single high school diploma with a single graduation requirement? But that's just the superintendent's perspective, not necessarily the perspective of the principal nor the high school.
Are you saying get rid of the?
I'm saying keep this. And at the same time, recognize that some of our kids, if they're going to graduate, find it very difficult to get this many credits. And sometimes it might be worthwhile thinking about how we allocate credits and how we allocate diplomas to all hundred of our kids who graduate. And so certainly for kids going on to two- and four-year colleges and many other areas, this is a very reasonable requirement. But some of our children, we may want to think about, are there other ways of allowing them to have a Campbell High School diploma that would be both meaningful to them and not compromise a Campbell High School diploma? that would be both meaningful to them and not compromise a Campbell High School diploma? But that is just my thoughts, please be careful, these are not generated from the high school.
No, that's fine.
Personally, I would like to have that broader conversation, I'd like to revisit graduation requirements, but do we need to have, do we need to do this to be compliant?
No.
With RSA, or?
I would say so long as we get this done fairly early in the year, it would be fine. You could do this now, and then ask for a wider discussion of graduation requirements early in the year, I, I think any one of those courses would be fine, certainly waiting two weeks until Principal Lonigan is sitting in front of us, it's not going to compromise this.
Do we need to create a civics exam for them to graduate? I remember.
We already, I believe, have that requirement, that they have to pass a civics exam in order to graduate, so we're already in compliance with the new law that has been passed regarding high school civic exams, yes. Is that correct, out in the audience? I believe we have an expert out there. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to move IKF to the September sixth meeting.
No second, that.
I, I'm certain the rest of the board would probably just go along with the policy, but I think it's fair to have the entire board just take a look at it, because I know we've had a lot of discussion when we went to twenty-four credits, and the graduation distinction honors that, I'd like to make sure that the whole board is here. But I think it's pretty straightforward, I mean, the small changes that are made in here, and Bill will be here at that time too, in case he has anything he wants to add. Let me just move it to the September sixth one, they're here.
Thank you.
Well, bring us to policies for reapproval process, and the first one is procedural safeguards, non-discrimination of the basis of handicap disabilities. There's a lot of.
It is a long time.
Verbiage.
Do you want me to?
Yes, if you would.
Basically, the policy that we had before was very long, well, not really long, yeah, it was long, and it outlined the basic procedures for non-discrimination. The procedural safeguards is now been implemented basically through the RSA, the RSA says the procedural safeguards that the state provides covers all of this, and that's what parents have to be directed to, so the policy, as it was written, becomes invalid, and we have to provide the procedural safeguards, and we already implement them anyway, so the policy here is just reflecting, it's a rewrite, reflecting that this is what the RSA says, and the procedural safeguards are the procedures. That's why I, I wrote on the agenda narrative that you may want to just review these, but have a longer conversation about, you know, with the rest of the board, about how you want to do them. This, these should go, these are major rewrites and should go through the procedures.
Right.
Okay.
So can we move this one to, not the sixth, but the following meeting?
Mm-hmm.
That will give everyone the opportunity, plenty of time to like, review it, and if there's any questions. And that brings us then to BEDG, minutes and public records.
This was interesting.
They all are, but.
A lot of research went into this, and, and legal vetting. Previously, the minute, the board had a policy that just said minutes, and outlined what the minutes were for, and how we would present them and publish them. The RSA now covers the right-to-know process within that, and it was recommended that the policy that we had for the public right-to-know be included in this policy, which is why we changed the title to minutes and public records. Upon approval by the board, the right, the existing right-to-know policy will be rescinded. This is, again, a total rewrite.
Just for new board member, when you say a total rewrite, that means that legal counsel has reviewed this, and you probably initiated that by looking at other districts, and looking at exactly what other policies were, and then you put together a policy in council, or in concert with legal counsel, and then legal counsel has signed off on this for the board to utilize. Just so you understand what the, what the process is that we use.
And what I usually do right before the board, if, right before the board votes to approve it, is I'll send it through legal one more time, with any changes.
So it's well-vetted.
It's true.
And just one comment on RSA's.
Write that down.
I'm of the opinion that, excuse me?
I'm sorry, I just wanted to make sure Michelle got it in the minutes that Liz.
No, I, I think we're very, very fortunate for Michelle, she's very good with policy and does an excellent job.
Yeah, when it comes to right-to-know, you can't be too careful.
Right.
It's, it's really a very, a very slippery slope.
Yep.
Should we say, should we table this one too?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
So we'll bring this one back on the second meeting. Just jumping down, the next one is the EBBC-JLCE, emergency care and first aid.
This was, this we had brought forward last year, made the changes, and the board held a public hearing about the possession and administration of naloxone, and the nurses were here and provided their input, and it, we never went forward with it, so I kind of, I rereviewed it, and, and made any other necessary changes that I had to make as far as the law was concerned, and brought it back for you to review and, and discuss when you, you know, when the full board is here, and hopefully approve.
And they, the nurses, if I'm not mistaken, have all been through training for this now, correct?
There were two nurses that are trained, as far as I know, I will have to, I'll have to find out if the third nurse is.
I thought they were, they were all going to be going through training in order to.
They were supposed to, they were supposed to. I know that two of them did, so.
And this is the same, the nurses have already vetted this, and they're.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
They were here for the meeting, a couple of them. Alright, the next one is IHBAA, evaluation requirements for children, specific learning disabilities.
This is another rewrite, another one where the policy that we had before, did this have a policy before? I'm sorry, my mistake, this is a, an adoption, we did not have, okay, let me begin again, my senior moment is taking over. This replaces the policy on, the old policy we had for criteria, the district criteria for special ed evaluations, and the, it was JLDAC, and it was a very long controversial policy that took us a year and a half to pass. It has now become antiquated, and the law basically tells you that the procedural safeguards is your criteria, and so this is basically a replacement.
The same as the other one, as far as.
Same as the other one, but this has to do with the evaluation requirements.
Right, but here's a state booklet, this is what policy is.
That procedural manual will be attached to several policies in, in our repertoire, so.
I'll make a motion then to accept IHBAA.
Second.
Are you sure you don't want to go through the process for this?
Oh, with the first reading?
I do. So this is the first read?
Oh, you want to accept it as the first read?
Yes.
Okay.
And then the, the board, when they see it on the second time, because, I mean, it's the packet, it's the state packet, I mean, it's.
This is true.
So I'll make a motion for the first read. And you're second.
Second, yep.
Further discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Three zero zero. We'll bring it back for a second read.
And then when it's approved, you can rescind the other policy.
That'll bring us to IMDA, school ceremonies, observances of patriotic exercises.
This was not a major rewrite, the, the code, policy code changed, it used to be IND, but this is not a major rewrite, but the la, the number seven, paragraph seven, that says during the weeks of Memorial and Veterans Day, the district will devote time for exercises of period, patriotic nature, including a discussion of words meaning and history of the pledge allegiance and the Star Spangled Banner. I thought that was something the board might want to discuss, so that's why I, I suggested it go through the process, because I don't know how everybody feels about that.
Is that a state RSA?
Well.
I was more surprised by the Constitution Day.
It is a state RSA, it is, but it's also section 111 of the Division of Public Law. So it says, in accordance with federal law, the district shall offer an education program each year on Constitution Day, which we do, the superintendent, further during the weeks of Memorial Day, Veterans Day, the district will devote time for exercises of a period, patriotic nature, including, I, I just put that whole wording right in there, including the discussion of words meanings, and history of the pledge allegiance and Star Spangled Banner, so.
It's pretty interesting.
It's, it's RSA 18918.
I'm looking at the words, will devote time, so who will devote that time?
Well, you can change that to shall.
Oh, boy, here we go again.
Did we leave this in social studies, is this something?
That's why I wanted the board to discuss. I think Nate wants to say something.
No, the.
I'm looking at the Memorial Day and Veterans Day. The district will devote time for exercises of a patriotic nature, including a discussion of the words meaning and history of the pledge allegiance and the Star Spangled Banner, number seven.
That will be interesting.
I've actually seen more of that than I have of Constitution Day. In the, in the earlier grades, anyway.
I know that they.
I didn't even know there was a Constitution Day.
At least here at THS.
Yeah, we usually do, there's a commemoration of each of those days, we usually have, at certain times, we've had veterans.
Yeah, they do, I know they do at GMS and LMS as well.
Over this loudspeaker.
We usually devote something to, last year, yeah, we've had a Sibley's, we've done all sorts of stuff, I mean, it's, fluctuates year to year based on, you know, what you want to do.
I think it's another we will bring back at the end of September, and we'll have some conversation. That'll bring us to JCA, change of school or assignments.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's alright, just reading.
I think it's another senior moment. The change in, the changes in this, I, again, thought that the board might want to discuss, they basically clarified that the superintendent is the, it, it has the approval and, and reassigns pupils upon board approval, that was not in the previous policy. So I wasn't sure if the board would like to discuss that kind of procedure, or if they had other suggestions for the policy, the way, the way it's written. We also added a special education placement at the end of the policy, which was not there before, and that is part of the law. I just wasn't sure how the board felt about it, that was my only reason for saying go through the process.
And the same thing, we'll bring this one back when there's a full board, JCA.
Thank you very much for reviewing those.
And hopefully the other board members, I'll make certain I sent out an email before the meeting, sometime back, I mean, I, I think on some of these bigger changes, we're much better off to have the full board's commitment to it. So that is it on those policies, correct? Except the next one is school board member use of social media.
The, the last meeting, the board chair had asked for some guidelines, or information on guidelines for a board member use of social media, since we have gotten very dependent on digital content lately, and the use of Twitter, and, and other social medias throughout the district and the community, I notified, I did a lot of research, there are very, very few in the nation that even have a policy. I did find guidelines, I vetted them through legal counsel, very, very carefully and closely, and I think I included her letter in there. She was, Attorney Girl was very adamant that the board, I don't know if you can say adamant, she advised strongly that the board not adopt a policy, but rather adopt guidelines, because of legal accountability.
Well, I'm wondering if it falls under.
Code of Ethics.
Code of Ethics, on, by the school board.
That's why she said make it guidelines, and we could just add it to the, to the code of ethics. She, she was more concerned about legal ramifications of the policy.
Yeah.
And it just clicked to me, when I asked the last time as far as the policy, I'm thinking that maybe it just followed the, the other guidelines, as far as code of ethics, and, and how we should represent this.
These look great, though, I have to say.
Yep.
These, these guidelines are fit.
Guidelines to follow.
Alright, and we'll present this to the entire board also.
I just want to thank Michelle, because I know there was a significant effort made by Michelle to finalize this, and get this to the point, which she could bring it to you, but it did take some time.
Thank you.
You're welcome. My pleasure.
Well, there are some good points here, and one jumps out at me, that I just read it. Post only content that the school board or school district has already released to the public, and that, that's a concern, I think, with social media, and that was like, one of mine, is like, it can just implode on you, it's like, you know, one person says one thing, and someone from the school board just jumped on, like, tries to answer it, and we haven't even had a discussion of it. Not to say that that's happening or has happened, but I, I can see that very easily happening. Alright, so we'll bring that one back also to the full board.
Do you want that on the twentieth or the sixth?
All of those on the twentieth, because we have.
All of them?
Yeah. So I think the sixth is going to be a little bit.
It is.
Bigger meeting.
Okay, that sounds good to me.
Excellent. Alright, so that'll bring us to the manifest. I'll have to explain to Liz, do you have any questions on the manifest?
I don't, no.
And Liz, have you looked at the manifest yet?
No.
Alright, we'll show those to you, and then we'll go from there. That'll bring us to public input.
Can I bring something as a PTO fundraising coordinator, before the board? Or should I have that added to the agenda? It's a new fundraiser that we'd like to have approved by the board.
Yeah, you'd have to come and present, or have someone come and present as far as the PTO.
Okay. Thank you.
With that, I take, we're going to be going to non-public, you said you have something?
No, no, I have nothing else.
No, for non-public?
I do, yes.
Yes. So we're going to non-public, RSA ninety-one dash A, colon, three one one.
Oh, geez. Sorry.
What's for supper, mom?
I believe he's still traveling the roads with the football team somewhere under what the contract.
The dismissal promotion and compensation of any public employee, or the disbanding of such employee, or the investigation of any charges against him unless the employee affected, one has a right to a meeting and request that the meeting be held, I'm sorry, the meeting be open, in which case the request would be granted. Be the hiring of any person as a public employee, see matters which are discussed in public would likely affect adversely the reputation of any person other than a member of the body of the agency itself, unless such person requests an open meeting.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. For now, non-public.